First 2023 meeting. Happy Halloween, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dodge?
Here.
Commissioner Rice?
Here.
Commissioner Lenderman?
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have. It seems like forever we've been doing this because it has been long before we were all here. We are going to talk about our GFOA budget award and recognize our wonderful team that year after year does a great job. So John Parks, take it away.
Thank you so much, appreciate it. It is a wonderful team. I feel it's the best it's ever been. And so my group is over here and we recognize them in a second. But this is our 41st award that we've received from GFOA. And so we're excited about that. We're the longest running county in the country and only, yes. And only Eugene, Oregon and Boca Raton, Florida have the 41 awards. So that's a pretty good run. And this was the first budget document that was submitted in 1983, rather thin. But there is a budget message and their issues were difficult, economic times and recession and low retail sales and but they did have higher interest rates. So it's very similar to where we're at all these years later. And that was Commissioners Curran, Horn and McIlwain back in the day. So we appreciate that. Do have an award to present to the Commission from GFOA. And so if I could have my staff come forward and have a picture, that would be awesome. I would like to recognize Chris Neary and Janet Holman. Chris is our Budget and Financial Planning Manager. Janet is our Financial Systems Manager. So Chris runs the budget side and Janet, she ran, her and her team helped us run the system side, which our document now is all electronic version on the web. So we're one of the first in Ohio, especially in a county, to make it an all electronic web version. So we still innovate and try to keep it moving.
John, you want to, before you give the Commissioners the award, you want to talk a little bit about the work that goes into this because it's not just a plaque. Everybody across our Human Services, our Business Services, all of our fiscal team, the departments across all the elected officials. This is a countywide participation to make this happen.
Yes, it absolutely is. And we start the document actually with our budget process. So collecting data for the year and working with all of, you know, across over 40 departments within the county. So it is quite a job to collect the data that goes into all the necessary requirements for reporting in the document that the Government Finance Officers Association puts on that. So it's more than just a financial document, more than just numbers. There are very various other aspects for planning, for forecasting, for KPIs, key performance indicators. So we work a lot with Haley and her group. And then of course with all the other breakdowns among the county with judicial law enforcement, with Adamus Board, all the agencies that we have. It really is a huge effort and you can't really miss any one of those items or you essentially you fail on the qualifying criteria. So we make sure that everybody understands, you know, the needs that we have. And, you know, for 41 years, you know, the culture of collaboration that we have within this county is really unparalleled, I feel, in the state. Anytime I go to, you know, state association gathering or among the urban counties, it's always, I'm like, I can't believe you don't get along with your Sheriff's Office or with your courts. I mean, it's really special here in Montgomery County. I've just been pleased to be a part of it all these years. So my first document that I worked on was in 96 with Environmental Services. Yeah, but it is very much appreciated the support that we get from Michael and the Commissioners, all the elected officials and agencies as well.
Thank you, John, and thank you to all our team. Give yourself a round of applause.
Well, and as I've told you more than once, and I'll say it again, you know, I came from the private sector and I would match our team bar none that just stellar, even though our challenges are different, our requirements are, you know, quite high. And that I can look any citizen in the eye and say, we have an outstanding, outstanding team and our financial management of this county is stellar. And so that's thanks to all of you. And if we don't tell you often enough, we truly, truly mean it and appreciate all those efforts and hours and meetings and spreadsheets and all that you do. We really, truly, truly appreciate the work you do on behalf of our citizens.
You make us look really good, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks to the whole team.
Glad to do it, yes.
And we keep watching on you because we're right around the corner.
You're a little too close for me.
We keep an eye on you.
Appreciate it. Get a spreadsheet every now and then.
PDFs for Michael.
Uh-oh. Be careful what you wish for.
Well, team, why don't you come on up? We're going to do a picture real quick, all of you.
Are we going to stand?
Let's just stand.
Should we stand?
Yeah, let's just stand. We're just going to stand up, so.
It's a big crowd.
I know.
Across the hallway, do that.
Hi. Hi, all guys. I almost dipped in.
Exactly, maybe next.
John, we got to get Chris, the puzzle master, in there.
Next year when it's, yeah, 42.
Yep. Big crowd.
You guys are tall.
Robert, you got everyone?
That's a tall department.
It is.
There you go.
Awesome.
Oh, that was a. Robert's sweater, look at this. It's cute, Halloween.
Oh, okay, now.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Nice tie. You're welcome. All right. Our County Engineer, Paul Brunner, take it away.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Administrator, ladies and gentlemen. We have a number of items for your consideration today. First is Resolution 23-1376 to amend the agreement with WG Stang LLC for the Astoria Road Color Replacement Project in German Township by adding $3,000 to the original amount for revised total of $291,909.20. 1377 is to authorize the purchase from any company of a combination jet vacuum sewer cleaner in the amount not to exceed $538,064.30. 1378 is to authorize the County Auditor to pay by warrant $124,746.40 to the City of West Carrollton for permissive tax funds for the 2022 East Dixie Drive Resurfacing Project. 1379 is to authorize the County Engineer to proceed with force account work during 2024 pursuant to Section 5543.19 of the Ohio Revised Code. 1380 is to advertise for the traffic signal maintenance repair and minor construction project countywide at an estimated cost of $145,000. And then we have several change orders. 1381 is with Barrett Paving Materials, Inc. for the asphalt concrete resurfacing program countywide by adding $17,455 to the original amount for a revised total of $2,934,451.63. 1382 is with Barrett Paving Materials, Inc. for the 2023 asphalt concrete resurfacing program countywide by decreasing the amount by $216,962.50 for a revised total of $2,717,489.58 due to work not performed at Wolf Road, south of Turner Road, due to jurisdictional boundaries. And 1383 is with Brumball Construction, Inc. for the airway road bridge replacement project in the City of Riverside by extending the date through December 1st, 2023.
Move to approve?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
County Sheriff?
Thank you, Commissioners. Under the County Sheriff, we have Resolution 381384 authorizing a memorandum of understanding with the Ohio Organized Crime Investigations Commission Task Force for the Human Trafficking Task Force and to investigate organized criminal activity violations pursuant to Ohio Revised Code. We also have Resolution 1385 participate and act as a sub-grantee in a grant received by the Dayton Police Department from the Ohio Department of Public Safety, Ohio Traffic Safety Office for funding of the Montgomery County OVI Task Force. We have two authorization agreements. Resolution 1386 Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, Firearms and Explosives for overtime salary costs associated with ATF Task Force through September 30th, 2028. And Resolution 1387 Civic Plus for AudioI platform software in an amount not to exceed $3,225 through November 30th, 2024.
I move for approval.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Common Police Court?
Thank you, Commissioners. Under the Common Police Court, we have Resolution 1388 authorize a price agreement with Escribers LLC for transcription services through July 15th, 2026.
Move to approve?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. County Prosecutor?
Thank you, Commissioners, Administrator. On behalf of the County Prosecutor, Matt Heck Jr., we have Resolution 23-1389. That's to authorize an agreement with Glenn McMurray and Craig Sweeney of TAFs, Tendius and Hollister LLP to act as special prosecuting attorneys in the providing of legal counsel to Montgomery County, including but not limited to the Board of County Commissioners, Environmental Services for the review and analysis of the water supply contract with the City of Dayton at a cost not to exceed $50,000 through December 31st, 2023.
I move for approval.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Juvenile Court? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. On behalf of Juvenile Court, Resolution 23-1390 to accept a continuation agreement with the Alcohol, Drug Addiction and Mental Health Services Board to maintain the juvenile treatment court program in an amount not to exceed $195,369 through June 30, 2024. Resolution 1391 to authorize the automatic renewal option with Page Freezer for social media archiving subscription services in an amount not to exceed $2,748 through October 2nd, 2024. And Resolution 1392 to authorize the purchase from Safewear for installation and programming of security equipment in an amount not to exceed $149,596.47 through June 30, 2024.
Move to approve?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Treasurer's Office?
Thank you, Commissioners. Under the Treasurer's Office, we have Resolution 1393 authorizing the disbursement of funds from the Treasurer's Delinquent Tax and Assessment Collection or DTAC Fund to the Montgomery County Land Reutilization Corporation in an amount not to exceed $528,465.52.
I move to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Miami Valley Regional Crime Lab?
Under the Miami Valley Regional Crime Lab, we have Resolution 1394 accept a grant from the U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs for the FY 2023, strengthening the Medical Examiner Core and System Program, Forensic Pathology Fellowships in an amount of $150,000.
Move to approve?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. County Administrator?
Under the County Administrator, under the Clerk's Office, we have approved the minutes of the meetings on October 17th, 2023. Resolution 1395 approval bills. Resolution 1396 approval travel and expenses. And Resolution 1397 approval personnel actions. All three of those lists are available in the Clerk's Office.
I move to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Administrative Services, Tyler?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. We have several resolutions for you today as well as a couple late items, beginning with Resolution 1398. This authorizes an intergovernmental agreement with the Champaign County Emergency Management Agency to transfer ownership of equipment purchased with fiscal year '21 State Homeland Security Program grant funds. 1499 authorizes the approval of Justice Web service agreements with various criminal justice and governmental entities. Resolution 1400 amends the price agreement with Crown Personnel Services Incorporated by adding additional job classifications and rates for various county departments. Resolution 1401 requests proposals for correctional food services for the Sheriff's Office and Juvenile Detention Center. The following two resolutions authorize agreements, beginning with 1402 with Charles Taylor TPA LLC for property casualty third-party claims administration for the Risk Safety and Emergency Management Department in an amount not to exceed $32,725 through October 31st, 2024 with options to renew. And Resolution 1403 with Argus Growth Consultants, LTD, for consultant services for the Office of Strategic Initiatives in an amount not to exceed $25,000 through December 31st, 2023.
Move to approve? Oh, he's got late items.
Okay, correction, we have one late item. Resolution 1427, and this extends the service agreement with Rumke of Ohio Incorporated for trash hauling and recycling services for various county-owned buildings through October 31st, 2024.
Okay, move to approve?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Environmental Services, Matt?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. For Environmental Services, we have Resolution 1404 authorize an agreement with Red Zone Robotics Incorporated for construction of the large diameter sanitary sewer cleaning and assessment project. Phase four at their lowest best bid of $673,570 through September 30th, 2024. Resolution 1405 authorize cost participation for properly sizing sanitary sewer line utility work in connection with the Windstone subdivision, Section 5, in an amount not to exceed $15,205.50 payable to MI Homes of Cincinnati LLC. The following two are to approve plans and specifications, estimated costs and solicit bids. Resolution 1406 solid waste off-road equipment service station at an estimated cost of $830,120. And 1407 Eastern Regional Water Reclamation Facility Fuel Island Repair Project at an estimated cost of $369,000. And the following two are to accept the subdividers contracts. Resolution 1408 with Fu-Yao Glass America for the Fu-Yao Glass Water Relocation Phase Two Development. And 1409 with HBS Development Incorporated for the McEwen Townhomes Development.
I move to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. OMB, John?
Good afternoon. We have Resolution 1410 to authorize a tuberculosis funding agreement with the State of Ohio Department of Health for use of funds made available under the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention and TB Cooperative Agreement in an amount not to exceed $14,811.20 through December 31st, 2023.
Move to approve?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Human Services, Jessica?
Good afternoon. We have Resolution 1411 accepting a grant from the Ohio Department of Aging for the Healthy Aging Grant. Resolution 1412 amending the grant agreement with the State of Ohio Department of Development for capital improvements to the Apple Street Shelter for Women and Families by extending the term through December 31st, 2024. And Resolution 1413 amending the agreement with St. Vincent de Paul for the Apple Street Emergency Shelter for Women and Families Capital Improvements Project by extending the term through December 31st, 2024. And Resolutions 1414 authorizing an inter-agency agreement with the Office of Strategic Initiatives for Justice Web interactions and reports in an amount not to exceed $40,000 through December 31st, 2024. And Resolution 1415 certifying the Department of Job and Family Services compliance with the ORC Chapter 5108 by adopting a written statement of policies governing the Montgomery County prevention, retention and contingency by any old renewal plan through September 30th, 2025.
You want me to move for it?
Move to approve, well.
I second.
I'm sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Business Services, Chris?
Thank you, Commissioner. Under Business Services, Information Technology, the first two authorize purchase agreements. First one is 141676 for service now license renewals in an amount not to exceed $66,160.20 through September 30th, 2024. Next one's 1417 with the University of Dayton Center for Leadership for Training and Development Services in an amount not to exceed $9,420 through October 31st, 2024. Next one's under Workforce Development, 1418 authorize the option to extend the agreement with Miami Valley Career Technology Center for Basic Skills Computer Lab Services in an amount not to exceed $60,480 through June 30th, 2024. And the next two are under Community and Economic Development. 1419 authorize agreement with United Church Homes, Inc. for Longfellow Commons Community Project in an amount not to exceed $1 million through December 31st, 2026. And 1420 authorize agreement with Windsor Tower LLC for the grant denial or denial tower project in an amount not to exceed $750,000 through December 31st, 2024.
I move for approval.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I just want to point out on 1418, not related to this, but CTC is such a great partner for us in workforce. And Carolyn and I had the opportunity yesterday to do a tour of our Montgomery County ESC where they have partnered with CTC, all those initials. But it's just really great to see the training that they're doing to some of our students that are...
Most difficult.
The most, thank you, Carolyn, former teacher. She's the most difficult to work with. But they're doing a great job there and it was really encouraging to see something that neither Carolyn or I knew that the ESC was doing. It's a newer program. In fact, it's the only one like it in the state, but.
Future Center Now or something like that?
Future Center Now and the students, you know, look, not so much learn science and math, although they are, they don't really realize it, but it's more of what could you do? So with CTC being a partner, it's really pretty interesting.
Commissioners, you know, we've been partnering with CTC for some years in helping us move individuals so that they have the reading and math skills they need to go into the workforce.
Yep.
So I think it's just all the way around. It's a great partnership.
It's a win-win, thank you. Okay, under County Commissioners, 231421 is to approve the annexation of 85.61 acres, more or less, from Clay Township to the City of Brookville in accordance with Section 708.23 of the Ohio Revised Code. And 231422 is to amend Section 2 of the Bylaws of the Montgomery County Water Services Appeals Board to authorize the County Commissioners to appoint three members representing the general public. And 1423 is to appoint Maureen O'Meara to the Water Services Appeals Board filling an unexpired term ending August 31st, 2023. 2024, thank you, Emily. Emily never makes mistakes. I don't think you did that. It just, you never make mistakes. That's true, she doesn't, but. 1424 is to reappoint Paul Brunner and Tom Welly to serve on the Montgomery County Convention Facilities Authority Board, or as we like to call it, the CFA, through December 31st, 2027. Are you going to stick around that long? You going to stay with it? Please, we want you to. We want you to. Stick with it. Thank you.
You thought you were out, Paul, and we pulled you back in.
No, we're really glad you're there, Paul. And it's looking great. It's looking great, it is, coming along. 1425 is to reappoint Elizabeth Search to the Monday Facility Governing Board for a three-year term ending December 31st, 2026. All these different years.
Yeah, move to approve. I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I have a question for you, Matt. Do we have people lining up to be on the Water Services Appeals Board?
I don't think so.
Because we got three to appoint, okay.
But we're undergoing, we're upgrading our whole process.
Oh, yeah, no, it's huge, yeah.
So we're going to find great people who have just the right talent and experience and interest to serve the community, so it's going to be good.
I never have my phone on. Paul, that's something maybe you could do too, if you're interested. His retirement job, yeah.
I see a Ruben in your.
Yeah, check on that one. Okay, so we do have a couple citizens signed up to speak. First, Jason Nichols. Jason, you want to come up? Oh, Willie wants to go first? Go ahead, Willie, come on up. Very nice sweatshirt you have on. It's colorful. It's cool, it's different. All right.
Willie Feaster. Yeah, I must talk about the incident that happened October 21st at the Premier Health Building down the street to that old 66-year-old lady named Ms. Gloria Courtney. That was working security. The young, the man, she in there by herself, number one, watching that whole building. She go to do her rounds, go upstairs. Beat to known to her that when she come downstairs, this man, James Brickling, was completely naked. That didn't come on the news. He was completely, he didn't have a pair of socks on. So she confronted him and he commenced to beat that woman damn near to death. She had no button to call for help. She in there all alone. Then after he beat her, he kicked her eight times in the head and he used karate kicks. Then he still don't leave. He go over to the wall, pull the fire alarm. The fireman thinking they coming to a fire. They don't even know this old woman sitting there damn near beat to death. Eyes gorged out. So they walk in there and he beats the fireman damn near to death.
Mr. Feaster?
Yes, sir.
Hold off on your language. Be respectful.
He beats the fireman.
Thank you.
Completely. Then he had a nerve, man. You know, drugs, mental health, all of these played a part in this here. Michael Corbett, Debbie, it's no punishment. Bitten for what he did to that old woman. I don't care what you on zombie, whatever they call that goofy stuff. It's no punishment. Prosecutor, they can give me 30 to life, let me prosecute him. 40 to life. It's no excuse. Can you imagine somebody sticking their hand in your eyes? Gorging, the lady is not completely blind. But we go back to immersion security. What is she in there by herself for? You got that big building, you got to patrol that, yeah, you got to, but you got to make rounds. You in there, she didn't have no button. She had a cell phone, but she's knocked unconscious. She can't get to her phone. They don't even have a button to push for help. Who would have thought something like that could happen in a building like that? But they go to show you, Debbie, Mike, prosecutor? A crime can happen anywhere, anytime, no matter where, what building, what, whatever. But words, man, cannot describe, man. I, I, I'm speechless, man, you know. I really am, man. And hopefully, 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 I know my time is up, hopefully, all these people they got downtown, walking around in Melanie Hill, everywhere downtown, on drugs. Hopefully, man, all the money y'all get, y'all can address this. Y'all can, that could have happened to me, it could have happened to you, Debbie. It could have happened to you, Mike, or one of these crazy people. But I hope, I pray to God, man, because he still has the right presumption of innocence. You know, he still reserves that right because he's not been convicted. But if he's convicted, 30 to life. He sit over there in county jail crying now, crying and weeping, but now you know what you have done to gravity of what you committed. It's too late for that.
Thank you, Mr. Feaster.
30 to life.
Thank you, Mr. Feaster.
Thanks, Willie.
Thank you very much, Mr. Feaster.
Willie, you brought up a great, a great. Willie, you brought up a great, a great point, you know, mental health is something that is not just in our community, but throughout the country and it's, it's getting worse. And so I think you've heard some of the presentations about the things that we are doing immediately, um, to, to really look at what can we as a community do better to help these people who a lot of them don't belong on the street. You're right, Willie, they, it's, it's, it's a crisis. So we hear you. Thank you. I know when I heard the whole thing, that was horrifying. But, um, I know Premier's taking it very seriously as well and, and so, um, we just have to hope that nothing like this happens again. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Feaster.
Now, Jason Nichols. Oh, oh, okay, that's fine. We'll keep it. All right. Commissioner Michael.
Thank you, Commissioners, and, um, you know, I'll just accent what you said, Commissioner Lieberman, uh, which is one of the reasons why I think, uh, you know, under your leadership, the three of you, uh, we had the Behavior Health Task Force. And from the recommendations of that, as it relates to, uh, our future jail construction, as it relates to, uh, the work, what we want to do on the system, unifying the system through the portal uh, that we are working on, uh, to identify individuals that need help and try to make sure that they are going through the appropriate doors and not going through a wrong door. So as, uh, as the work with the behavior health providers continues and the Greater Dayton Area Hospital Association and our team, both in the HHS side under Jessica and Strategic Initiatives under Haley, uh, we're going to continue, uh, to help those individuals that need help in the community. And Commissioners, thank you for your leadership on the Behavior Health Task Force. So, two weeks ago, Commissioner, about two weeks in a row, I think we had, our JFS Family Assistance Division held celebrations to recognize our staff's hard work um, as well as exceeding federal Medicaid timeliness guidelines. Now, a lot of people don't realize this, but when, once we return to a post-normal or post-COVID situation, um, post a pandemic, uh, our caseworkers were required to redetermine every single Medicaid case. And Jessica, I know you and your team know the work involved in this. You're talking about a hundred and eighty thousand customers in our county, uh, that are impacted or that are on Medicaid. Federal guidelines require a timeliness rate of nineteen percent, so there is no room for error on each one of these cases. And the redetermination requires us to go through case by case to make sure you're actually supposed to be on Medicaid. For the last six months, Montgomery County has led all counties in the state of Ohio on timeliness. Uh, and our, uh, Family Assistance Division success now has other counties asking how were we able to do it? Uh, since those counties are also facing increasing backlog. FAD's hard work means Montgomery County should complete all recertifications, uh, months ahead of the federal government's requirement. So I want to thank our JFS, FAD staff and all of our JFS support staff that made this happen. Jessica, please, uh, give my and the Commissioner's support and, and thank you for the work that they do. I know that's not easy, uh, going through a hundred and eighty thousand, uh, customer cases. That's amazing. So thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Jessica.
That's all I have, Commissioners.
All right, so in the theme of celebrating, we, um, last week, we celebrated the anniversaries of both our Business Solutions Center and the Employment Opportunity Center. It was, it was a great day. Uh, we started in the morning at the Business Solution Center. Uh, we had a crowd.
Yeah.
Filled up the, yeah, it was great. The, the community that came are, were partners, but they were also a lot of our businesses, small businesses as well. And we had a chance to enjoy a little bit of refreshments and we had presentations and great networking opportunity. Uh, Richard Stock from the University of Dayton came and, and did a compelling look at the region's economic outlook, uh, good and bad. And, um, we marked seven years at that facility. I know, yeah. I remember you and I walking around when it was just two of the studs, yeah.
I remember, um, when you, it was one of the first assignments I got when I started to the county. And you all said it had to be under budget. You're like, Michael, we only have so much to do this, so.
It looks great though. It still looks great. And we use it all the time, you know? People come and, and rent it and it's a, it's a great, it's a great facility. For those that don't know, it's off seventy-five South, like you can see UD Arena from, uh, it was the old, um, General Motors.
Delphi.
Delphi, it was Delphi's headquarters, yeah, yeah, so.
It's on Cincinnati Street, right?
Yes, it is. Nobody knows where that is typically though, but yeah. So that was a great morning and then in the afternoon, um, we celebrated, now this one too, it just blows me away, two years at our EOC, our Employment Opportunity Center. And the success there has just been incredible. The partnerships, the, the clients that come in, we heard from several of them. It was just kind of a, they didn't know they were going to speak, but it gave them an opportunity when we were done with the program. And they just started talking about how meaningful it is to have that Employment Opportunity Center. And for those of you that don't know, we talk about it a lot, but it's out at West Town on Third Street, right across from the VA. And I, this, the, the few people that spoke, their stories were just wonderful. It's a safe place for people. They go in there, you know, they get help, whether it's, one gentleman was with his social security, which we don't do, but we helped him, you know, know where to go, how to, you know, go through that. Helps people with jobs, resume writing. We have a great team there, but even more than that, it's, it's become a community resource. And I think Mike, who runs it now, I think he said there were over two hundred events there so far this year, two hundred. So, you know, the investment that we made in our citizens there is certainly paying off. We also have to thank John Trot, um, from, with, you know, helping us out from Area Seven. And I always call it that because I cannot remember what it's called. But Area Seven, Ohio Workforce Board, something, and, um.
He went to a long name.
I know, I know, yeah. And our partners there, of course, CTC, Miami Valley Career Technology Center, who do GED classes there. And, um, the big partnership is with Sinclair and they do IT training there. And that's just such a great program. We could go on and on about that one. But they have had five cohorts and a couple of people have gotten jobs. We have, you know, we've mentored the, the people that go through the IT program. And while we can't guarantee them a job, we can have them come and be a, see what we do at our IT. So, um, it's, it's just a great program. So, um, we're, the three Commissioners, we're, we were just thrilled to be there. And of course, we have to thank our director, even though I wish she was here today, but, um, our director there, Marvin Mitchell Cook and her team at both locations and at the Job Center, uh, their efforts, um, these, uh, not just the events, but both buildings is incredible and we're looking forward to the next, uh, celebration out at Madison Lake. That's going to be a great training facility, so, thanks team. It's good work.
You know, Commissioners, thanks for supporting us in moving these centers, having them strategically throughout the county. Uh, that's pretty spectacular. It gives everybody an opportunity to access job training and job readiness, so, thank you.
Well, I think it just fits in with the whole, you know, the, um, RVs that we've got. I think if, if COVID taught us anything, it is, uh, kind of reinforced to go where people are that acts, let's eliminate every barrier we can and so, uh, we need to do more. So it's, it's putting those values into practice and it's, it's not easy. Uh, and it's, you know, you have to find the resources to do it and I think we're fortunate in this community that we have the resources. And then we just are blessed that we have, uh, our employees do, uh, an amazing job. Once given a mission, they're going to blow it out of the water every time, no matter what it is, whether it's the budget, uh, group or our, you know, Opportunity Center or our children's, uh, caseworkers or the Family Assistance Division. They do their utmost, so another shining example of us rocking it.
Well, for those of you who are not familiar with where it is, it used to be an Aldi's there at West Town. And I remember we were there touring it. It wasn't quite open yet and then people were knocking at the door.
Already.
We can use your help, so, it's great, so. Okay, on another thing, uh, tomorrow marks the beginning of National Adoption Month. Now, here in Montgomery County, we have over a hundred children that are available for adoption. Now, these kids need safe, loving homes, so please consider exploring foster care or adoption and allow room in your heart and your home. If you're interested, there's an informational meeting on Monday, November thirteenth at six-thirty at the Haynes Center. You can call nine-three-seven-two-two-four-kids if you'd like more information or simply show up at the Haynes Center on the thirteenth at six-thirty.
And, uh, today, you believe it, not only is it Halloween, uh, but today is the last day of Breast Cancer Awareness Month, so, uh, we have had, um, I think a whole great spirit every week of, uh, everyone wearing pink and taking photos and reinforcing, um, the message that we all need to be aware and to be sure. And, um, you know, there's a ton of survivors out there now, but there's still people who aren't getting tested as regularly. Every week passes, uh, it, it seems like I know someone else who has just identified. So, um, if, uh, ladies, if you're out there and you haven't had your yearly mammogram screening, please do so. It is, uh, important. It can also happen to men. One percent of the cases are on men, so if you're experiencing discomfort or pain, don't ignore it. Check it out. It's always, the sooner the better. Also, like I said, it's Halloween and, uh, so everyone needs to be very, very careful tonight. I think this is, uh, beggars' night in most communities, so trick or treat and so slow down, be on the lookout, uh, and, and take care. And then finally, I just want to mention, uh, that today is the last day, uh, that my husband, Mike, is here and we are hosting one of the students, Mate Standup, Mate Tuk, from Bosnia Herzegovina. He's, hey, Mate, he has been here with, uh, the, the delegation, is seventeen students from three cities in Bosnia Herzegovina. Uh, this is a grant through the US State Department. We've done it now, I think, uh, this is the third time we've hosted. They come at this time every year. And the students, uh, are here to learn about our whole way of life, our government, our nonprofits, just how to engage. And last night they had their presentations. And, uh, what's really cool, because we keep, we've stayed in touch, we've always had a young man. Uh, so we've stayed in touch with our two previous students. And their big assignment is at the end, okay, you see all this, but what are you going to do to build a better future in your own community? And so their, uh, project that they are putting forward, and I know Mate will make sure that it gets done, is to build a place that's safe in their school when they're waiting for the bus and other things so that they can hang out and, um, come up with great ideas, but it's a wonderful program. And, uh, we are honored to be part of it, uh, through the Dayton Mediation Center, if anybody's ever interested. Next year will be here before you know it. So we wish them farewell in the morning. It has been a true honor to have you in our house. Thank you.
Nice to meet you, Mate.
And that's it, for me.
Nice. All right, so our next meeting is next Tuesday, November the seventh, Election Day. Everybody make sure you vote.
Yep.
Can't do absentees after today or request absentees, so you can either come down here and vote.
And I think it, well, check on the Board of Elections website, but it's open till like seven-thirty.
Every day is a little bit different.
I know. So be sure you check it out before you come.
But they are open this weekend too, Saturday and Sunday. Um, so there's an opportunity to vote on the weekend. It is crowded out there. I, I had to park in the outside garage myself, like you did this morning, and it is packed. People coming in, so it's a good thing. So, Election Day next Tuesday and we'll be right here at one-thirty.
I move to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, have a great week and we have.
We will now be having a viewing of the Shank Road Bridge Replacement Project. Okay. I know everyone's curious about it, so we should stay.
Oh, look at them running.
I know. You guys both wore pink today. That was good. You, you too. For the last day.
We're losing the crowd.
You had on pink.
I know, and I deliberately did it.
What? And he's had on pink. Nobody pays any attention to us.
No, I noticed it right away.
I don't dress myself.
I, I thought that too.
Are we on la, are we?
Yes, we're still on.
Yeah, we're still on.
Commissioner Cedric McGee is the project manager on the Shank Road Project and he'll be giving a presentation and, uh, he did a great job Friday night.
I was just going to say that. Good job Friday night with the, the new format with the awards moves. And when I, and we're talking about it, it was the end of ACP dinner and you're an officer, so thank you.
Thank you, uh, Commissioner Lieberman and, uh, County Engineer Paul.
Uh, good afternoon to everyone here today. I'm Cedric McGee, project manager of the Mott Shank Road Bridge Replacement. Hmm, did I cut it off? Okay. So we're looking here at a general view of the, uh, project site area. I'll be going over the first eleven slides of this presentation. This is a multi-span bridge replacement in which the old bridge will be removed and the new bridge will be installed to address safety concerns. So this project is located on Shank Road in Moraine, Ohio. It is a fifteen-minute drive from here. If you would like to visit the site personally, you can take State Route Four, also known as Germantown Pike, southbound, approximately six miles from here. Then turn left onto Shank Road. About another half mile down the road is the bridge site. So the bridge, uh, it crosses over Old Possum Creek and Possum Creek Metro Park. So this project has several issues here. It was built in nineteen sixty-four. It's in poor condition with a general inspection rating of four out of nine. Uh, the bridge is fifty-nine years old. It is a three-span concrete bridge slab with two lanes of traffic and a rural area. So we're here today because of these safety concerns. The new bridge will be, uh, of similar style as the existing bridge. It'll be a concrete slab bridge. That bridge will have a minimum roadway work and approach. There will be new guard rail installed and new rock channel protection to help alleviate any scouring erosion concerns along the channel banks. So here looking on the left of the screen, we have the existing roadway. The roadway is in relatively good condition. There's light reflective cracking on the surface along the limits of the bridge. But overall, the real issues are underneath the bridge. On the right side of the screen, you will see deterioration of the slab edges and plenty of debris against the piers. And we'll go into further detail of the bridge conditions. So here in the close-up view, there is over the side deck, uh, drainage along the north and south edges of the bridge beams that are, I mean, the bridge slab that's, uh, deteriorated significantly. And you can see there's exposed steel and then there's plenty of, uh, rusted piers. And you can see there's exposed steel, and then there's plenty of rusted piers and debris along those piers. And you can see also there's large areas of rusted corroded steel piles with areas of section loss. And then there's the old piers. We're going to solve that problem by removing the old piers and then replacing them with new piers on the new proposed bridge project. So in two thousand and nineteen, there was high water flows that washed away parts of the the rock channel protection along the bridge foundations. The county engineer corrected this problem by adding new rock channel protection. And these emergency repairs are shown in the center picture. As you can see, the crews are working and adding on rock. Overall, the abutment walls and foundations are heavily damaged with several cracks. And the structure is rated in poor condition and will be removed and replaced as part of this project. So you can see that the new rock is just helping to stabilize the bridge until we replace it. And then there's large amounts of debris and overgrowth around the bridge piers. And you can see that on the left side of the screen. But also, the, the bridge is, the existing bridge is not properly aligned with the channel, natural channel bridge. And so that was part of the problem in washing out part of the rock channel protection. If you look on the right side of the screen, we're going to not only install the new bridge, but add rock channel protection, but we're also going to shift the new bridge a few feet to the east so that the bridge will be properly aligned with the channel. And hopefully, we will avoid erosion issues. You can see in the screen, the overgrowth has gotten, apparently, so much that you can't even see one of the piers. You don't, you can't see the, the pier on the west side. So that's, that's our issues with the bridge. I can go over those pictures some more, and I think you get a view.
I think we got it.
A pretty good view, lots of overgrowth.
Pretty bad.
Slabs heavily cracked. The foundations exposed a little bit with cracks and, you know, steel piles underneath heavily rusted. So that creates a condition of four out of nine on the general inspection rating. Any questions, Commissioners?
Nope.
Definitely needs to be done. Sooner the better.
Well, thank you for allowing me to present this, and I'll look forward to hearing.
Thank you.
We're next week.
Thanks, Cedric. Two weeks.